I'd like to call our Rockingham County Board of Elections special meeting to order, April 25th, 2023, 10:00 a.m., for the Rockingham County Board of Elections, 240 Cherokee Camp Road, Reesville, Monmouth, Carolina. I'd like to welcome our board members here today and welcome those of you who chose to visit with us via Zoom. Will you stand, please, and follow the lead?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The board members, you know, we're here to go back over some things with our budget we did need on last Tuesday. We needed to come back to you and share some things with you, so I'm going to ask Paula to share what we discovered.
Okay, I'm still waiting on one item. Hopefully that's going to come in pretty soon. But as far as the revenues, nothing was changed on the revenues page one. On expenditures, the first change is on page two, at the very bottom, item number 412-4010, utilities. Originally, what we were told was zero. And what was proposed to us on April the 18th during our budget meeting with county management was they were going to put $10,000 back into that line item. After that meeting, I met with the county manager about what was discussed prior. So there's still, this is the one item we're still waiting on, what's going to happen as far as the dollar amount. With the gym facilities going in next door, this building is on one utility meter, one gas meter, and one water and sewer meter. It's not divided. And that's where the conversations are still going through. Originally, we were told zero and that engineered services would handle all of those utilities. Now they're saying there will be a certain portion. And hopefully, like I said, they knew our meeting was at 10:00. They're giving me a call. What he mentioned this morning was maybe $5,200. But hopefully, I'll get that figure. But that's the only thing, still not sure what number will go there as of yet. Going on to page four. Line item 412-5083, board training. What county management is saying is all departments across the board, they are requiring split conferences. So if there are, say, 10 people going to a conference, they're asking, and there's two conferences, they're asking that five go to one conference and five go to the other instead of all 10. So what they're asking of us on the board training is split conferences, maybe three going to the August conference and two going to the February conference or vice versa. And they're recommending that the request of $9,810 now be $4,905. Is there any questions on that?
Now, I have a question. After you get finished, I want to know what is our required responsibility for conferences? And will we have what we need to have by the deadline if we go as three there and three here?
Do you want me to go over that now?
No. I can finish.
All right. So the next line item is 412-5085, staff training. It's the same thing. They're asking that we split those and half staff goes to the August conference.
Good morning.
The remaining staff members go to the February conference. They are aware that the director has to go to both conferences as part of the requirement as director of board elections to attend all conferences. But the remaining staff members would be split. So the original budget was for $8,300 and they're recommending $5,250. And we're on page four. And I'll back up. The utilities, Secretary Schofield, which is on page two, they're recommending a dollar figure to go in there. Right now, it's zero original. When we met with them on the 18th, they recommended $10,000. That may be $5,200. We're still waiting on that dollar amount. But if you'll turn to page four.
Okay.
Item number 412-5083.
I did. Someone gave me that first look.
Who gave you that? I did. It was a surprise.
Okay, read the lines. All right, so I'll back up again. All right, on page two, at the very bottom, utilities 412-4010. We had put zero in there. And we met with county management. They recommend, they said it should be $10,000. We're still waiting on that dollar figure. Okay. It could be $5,200. That one is the only one we're still having question. All right, now on page four, board training, 412-5083. County management is asking all departments across the board to split their staffing on their conferences. So what they're asking, we have five board members, is that two or three go to the first conference in August and then the remaining members, whether that is two or three, would attend the conference in February. The original request was $9,810. And what county management is recommending is $4,905. So now moving down to staff training, 412-5085, same thing. They're asking that we split the conferences among staff members. And as I said a few minutes ago, the director of elections has to attend all conferences. So and they're aware of that. But the other staff members would be divided in half as far as attending the conferences in August and February. And so y'all know on conferences, we have the same number of conferences that we have elections. If we have one election in that fiscal year, it would be one conference. But in this particular budget year, we have two conferences because we have the municipal election and we have the primary election. So that's the purpose of two conferences. So what we had requested was $8,300. They are recommending $5,250. So are there any questions so far?
Chairman, I'd like to ask a question. Since this is a state board meetings, have you covered this with them? That we can split like?
Yes, and I'll answer. She wanted me to wait until afterwards for that. So.
Well, at this point now, since you've finished the conference, they're talking about the splitting part of it.
Okay. With the board members, you're required to do the online training and to attend a conference within the first six months of you being appointed to the board. Of course, that depends on if there's election. You are required to attend two conferences within your first two years as a board member. And you all have done that.
As long as they're happy with that.
But.
But I think I asked this question the last time we went through this. But we had some pretty successful teleconferences. And, you know, the expenses of these conferences is significant because of the travel and motel and food and everything else. And it looks like to me that that would be offset easily by having teleconferences.
That has been discussed. The state board said they would not do both. It's either onsite or remote. And they have not held a remote conference in three years. So the conference. I mean, in person, I'm sorry.
Okay, right.
They have not held an in-person conference in three years. So their intentions are, but it was last year, was to hold an in-person conference in August. Now, they could change that to a remote depending on what happens between now and then, but they won't do onsite and remote.
And these conferences, the conferences that they're talking about now are required. They're not optional on the part of the state of the county.
The director is required to attend. The board members, it's optional, but you do have a certain amount of conferences you have to attend and you have met that number right now.
Reason I was asking, in the business world, if it is a required corporate meeting, corporate has to pay for it. If it's optional as far as the county, or excuse me, the businesses, then we had to pay for it. So we had to decide whether it was worth spending the money for.
Right. And that's what the county's looking at. They're saying with the way the tax revenues are, that they've got to cut certain things. And this is what they saw as being cut across the board in every department is the training for staff and board members.
Let me ask this question. Even though it would be an in-person conference, will they be recording the in-person conferences so that we might get our hands on it to help us with our sharing? Because certainly if we split, three go here and two go there, that would be something that we could do when we share, when we come back. So that's a question that you might want to ask?
I can ask the state board that. I know they record the conferences that are remote because we have those where we can go back and actually view them. I don't know. I have not attended an in-person conference, so I can find out and let you know that that would be great if they did.
Be a lot better than whoever attends coming back and sharing the.
Yeah, and that's what they're asking is that the ones that attend the conference will come back and share with the other board members.
Any other questions concerning the board training and staff training for members?
All right, the next item they're recommending cutting is general supplies, which is line item 412-6010. And they're asking that we cut it by $2,500. And that would be in the supplies for the daily operations, the office and project committees, reducing that from $10,000 down to $7,500. So our budget request was for $17,600. They are recommending $15,100.
And what was their basis for their number? Just just pulling over the arrow?
I think they're looking at certain percentages out of every department, but they did not cut our precinct supplies. So that was good. This, they did not cut our precinct supplies line item.
So this is just the office?
Just for office.
Office supplies, okay. Well, that's a, that's about a 12 or 15% cut of what we had estimated it was going to be. I thought that was kind of steep.
And then the only other thing they cut out was the capitalized capital for the precinct printers, 65 of those and 15 laptops. And as you know, in our last meeting, we approved the budget amendment. And that will be going before the board of commissioners for approval. The plan may first to approve the $9,750 so that we'll be able to order those precinct officials in this fiscal year. And then with the laptop computers, IT is going to be locating us 15 computers that we have within the county that are within the same year as far as age-wise as the laptops we're using at our precincts now. And they feel confident that they do have 15 laptops that we'll be able to have.
So we'll get, we'll get other laptops from the county?
From the county, yes, sir. So with all of these totals, if you will turn to page six, the original department request with the capital included was $640,101. And if you take out the 32,250, it would be $607,851. Yes. And, but that's with the $10,000 included in there for the utilities. If you take the $10,000 out, it's $597,396. And I'm seeing it. I still had not heard back for sure which way. They knew we were having a meeting at 10:00 this morning. But like I said, what was recommended this morning was they thought it was $5,200. Now, how that's going to come into play, I don't know.
$5,200 for utilities?
So I don't know how they're looking at the utilities. The utility bills come to our post office. What was done with Help Incorporated prior was we paid 60% of the Duke Energy bill, the gas bill, the water bill, and the sewer bill. And Help Incorporated paid 40%. And how that was divided up was by the square footage of the building. I had a little issue with that because we had three people over here and they had 15 over there. It was more water usage, more sewage, sewer usage. So that's why they were looking at it. They were going to leave it at the same budget amount, which was $10,000. But when I told them the scenario about the gym would be open, 365, it's 24 hours a day, the lights would remain on, the heat would be consistent, you've got all the equipment that is using electricity, you've got showers in there, there would be a lot of usage. In this field, just three staff members over here except for during one stop. So that's what they're trying to look at as far as the utilities, what that amount might possibly be. It could be $10,000, it could be $5,200. How it's going to be divided, I'm not sure yet.
To gain access to that gym, do you have to have a security code?
You would have to have a county badge. You do have to be a county employee.
Okay.
Weren't we told at one point that the county was going to pick up the total utilities cost for the building?
We were.
What happened?
That's what I asked last Tuesday.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand the question or the answer.
Okay, go ahead.
We were told at one point that the county would pick up the total cost.
Yeah, that's what my understanding was also.
Right, and that's what was in the budget. There was zero in the budget here. And then she said, once we got to speak in town, we told us that it would be different.
We had the budget meeting, our meeting was at 10:00. We had the budget meeting at 1:00 last Tuesday, April the 18th. And that's when they said that I had misunderstood the conversation, that it should be $10,000. So that's when I met with the county manager after that. And they're trying to come to a different figure now.
Okay, well.
So that's still, they're still trying to figure it out.
I don't know if that was a misunderstanding.
Yeah, I didn't misunderstand, but.
It's a very bad principle. If the county pays for every business, every entity in the county, there gives no incentive for the users to be frugal with the resource, whatever it is, electricity, water, whatever. I think it costs needs to come back to the entity to be responsible for. I'm not, as a taxpayer, I don't want to pay for everybody's water or sewer or whatever. So that's a bad principle that they were offering, but I understood as Dermong did that what they were going to do.
That is, but it's going to be very hard to figure out the two different locations when you're on the same meter.
Can the meter be changed?
That, I don't know. And that may be something that they can.
And they have their meter and we have ours. We're not just asking.
That's the question is why can't we meter both facilities for all three utilities?
And that might be what they're looking at, why it's, you know, they're, we don't have a definite answer. That may be something they're looking at.
The cost of the meter put in.
They will be paying for additional lighting outside. Now, the lighting, we were responsible for 100% of the outside lighting, the board of elections was. Well, now they're going to install additional lighting, so.
Talking about the out, the big lights.
Yes, the big lights outside, yes.
Now that they can easily separate.
Yes, that can be, that's easily. But they're still working through that, but we just wanted you to know where it stands right now. Of course, these are preliminary as well. They still have to go through county management's recommendation to the board of elections and then, I mean, excuse me, the board of commissioners. And then the board of commissioners will have their budget meetings and they could possibly cut it some more. So, but this is where it stands right now. With the $10,000 included, we're looking at $607,396.
That's a difference of what, almost $500?
It's 455 or 54, something like that of what the original budget was. Because you're taking out the capital.
You're saying it's how much?
The, with the $10,000 included is $607,396.
Right. This is marked through, but I write, I'm reading 604,006. What's, what's the top number that's marked through?
640,101, is that what you're talking about? That was what we had actually requested originally.
And the 607,396 is what we end up with after our discussion running the AP. With a possibility of some more changes once it goes through two more agents.
Yes.
County manager, then the commissioners.
So there's a possibility we may have to tighten our belts a little bit more.
And what is your comfort level? Can, would it, I know that this will probably work.
Yes.
Find, find a way for this to work, but.
And I am okay with this. I mean, the utilities, I would like a firm answer on that, how that's going to be handled. But, you know, with them cutting everyone's budget, which as far as training, I understand. I mean, I know they had to cut somewhere. I don't like that it had to be there, but I, you know, sacrifices are sacrifices, so. But I just, we just wanted to make sure you were aware of what's going on and to be prepared for, there could be other changes.
And do you have a timeline now as to when you think?
This is. I think, but I'm not sure, I think the commissioners may be getting a copy of the full budget at their May 1st meeting. I think that's what the intentions are. So we should know before then what the finals are. But that's next week. That's next Monday.
And the request was made that we know exactly what they plan to give us before the public.
Yes, that was a request that was made during the budget meeting.
They've been scheduled, they get it ready for the May 1st meeting?
And it may be the May 15th meeting, but the intention was that the board would have their packets at the first meeting in May.
So. So what we need to do here, set, we need to do anything with the information that you're giving us or we'll just wait?
Just wait and see, but like I said, hopefully there won't be any more changes. The only thing I know that may possibly still be changes on is the utilities. And as soon as I get a firm answer on how that's going to be handled, I can let you know for sure.
So are we at this point submitting a new budget request?
No, this is, well, our supplemental was already accepted. This is just what county management is recommending to the county manager to present to the Board of Commissioners.
We don't have to accept any of these or suggest other numbers?
You tell me.
I think you can suggest, you know, if we feel like we need to suggest something, it doesn't mean that it's going to.
Well, I don't plan to suggest anything.
Oh, okay.
Just curious about process here.
Oh, okay, I understand.
I mean, if you have a recommendation of something else that you might want cut instead of a line item that they've recommended, I think they would listen to that. But I do think they do have a certain amount in mind that they need to cut the budget by for each department.
I have a thought, I don't know that I'm ready to put it as a motion. But I think we ought to recommend to the county management that we look at metering these buildings separately. I think that is something that ought to be done, not just leave it collective. The other thing would be, I think we ought to recommend to the State Board that they do the video conferencing. And if they have a cost issue, we can accept the county commissioners' recommendations for spending and we pay for 1/100 of it, our portion of it for the video conferencing.
In response to that, are we required to attend an onsite? Or are video conferences acceptable for all of our conferences?
They did the video conferences due to COVID. Right, usually they, before COVID, they never had video conferencing. All of them were in-person. And if you attended those, you were required to attend in-person. They wouldn't do both. And that's what was said when they said they were going to start doing the in-person, in-person conferences again, that it would not be both. It would just be in-person. And if for some reason something came up where they would not be able to hold the in-conference, it would go back to the video conferencing, but not both.
So some member of school field said he thought that we should ask them to separate the meters. And we don't even know if it can be done so close together. I don't know, I don't know anything about.
We got to the gym to get the meters in.
Right.
But that would, that's still not going to solve our issue on budget because right now is how do we split that cost? Because we put zero.
Right, and they recommended last Tuesday 10,000.
But that's for both sides.
Yes.
So we still don't know what we ought to have as a budget.
Well, it would still be just our portion. And then this morning, the number was estimated at 5,200. So they're still trying to figure out what that number should be based on usage. They were given the utility expenses for the last two years to look at.
So who assumes the responsibility for the portion that we're not assuming? The responsibility of the county?
The county. Whereas before, help paid that portion.
But that still doesn't seem like a very good split. That's 50, that'd be over half of the cost would be for us.
Well, that's why I said splitting it by square footage.
Won't work.
Won't work.
Right.
So, and that's what they're looking at.
Because it's a question of coding, running the water.
Yeah.
And we don't have any better figure at this point. And they don't have any better figure at this point.
Because right now, we're paying 100% of everything for both sides right now.
I would, I would see, it looks like to me, to each of our advantages to go ahead and accept the 5,200. But I know we won't have that much if that's half what was given last year. And still recommend that they put the meters in and meter us for what we use. We should end up with a surplus.
But if they add the, correct me here, if they add the 10,000, does that cover the total utilities cost for both sides?
It would not.
Okay.
It would not cover it because it would not cover. That's what originally, I don't, that's what I'm saying. They're still trying to figure out what to put there. Whether the county's going to cover it as a whole, which was what was suggested in January, or if it's going to be 10,000 and we pay so much of the bill, the county pays so much of the bill, or if it's 5,200. And I know it's all this, it comes from the same pot of money. It's the same tax dollars, but it's just how they distribute it. And that's what needs to be determined, how it's going to be distributed. If the 5,200 and then when we get the bills, we pay it until that money's gone, or if we pay a certain percentage, I'm not sure yet.
What was the amount that we paid in a year or so for utilities? What was the most expensive amount?
The actuals for 2122 was $8,777.
And that was just our portion of it?
Mm-hmm. Well, 2122, we paid a portion of Help Incorporated as well.
Okay.
Because they were no longer there.
Hopefully they're not using energy.
Well.
If they're not there.
Lights are still left on because some of the lights are permanent, that run all the time. But now I do not know how that section is right now because a lot of the lights and everything has been pulled down. I don't know if juice is still running over there to that side of the building. I'm assuming there is because they had turned off a portion of it, which affected our front hall, and they had to turn it back on. That's the issue too. Some of the wires run together on both sides.
That would present a problem.
It will present a problem.
So it looks like you need some clarity in the $10,000, whether it was just for our budget or whether it was a shared amount for the gym part and our part. You want to ask if they can separate the meters? And any other questions?
If I had to guess, I would say the 10,000 is what they were predicting for our side. For utilities, gas, outside lighting, and water and sewer. Because that's been the number that's been used for the last couple of budget years.
So why was there a change from the 10,000 to the 5,200 since we talked?
That I don't know.
That's.
Do we need any action? If we do, I have no problem with the training.
Okay. No, I mean, it's just if, the only action was if you wanted to leave that portion of the budget as it was and take it from something else.
The conference, the budget for training, I see that as being frugal and as a taxpayer, I'm glad they're doing that. As far as the equipment, the capitalized equipment, that also is logical. We've already moved the money into this year's budget for the fence. And they're going to give us hopefully good equipment, not their junk.
Well, you know, based on what you're saying though, it's going to be computers that are already in the system that are programmed most recently. I mean, that's the way we understand it. But if we get junked, then we're going to have some issues.
We'll have to have some discussion with them.
But they are.
Don't give me your old rec for I believe that.
Not a computer that may have been in more than 15 years.
Yeah.
But you know, they're, they're, figuring their purpose by playing with that, they need to meter us and meter the other section now. Because with that being a gym and you got a pass card, you can go in at 4 o'clock in the morning, you can go in at 2 o'clock in the morning, or any time between other than normal business hours as well. Of course, it again depends on how many people are going to utilize it and how often they come through. And they're dealing with an unknown that you couldn't put them a price on that right now under any condition, even if it close.
I think we definitely need to ask that it be remeded. Even if there's some wiring, even if there's some shared wiring to get it separated. Because we're not, they're not going to spend the kind of money they've already spent over there on that gymnasium and close it next month, next year. It's going to be, it's going to be here for a while.
And I also think the heating and air is the same too, that.
So how much, if we have joint wiring, that would have to separate, would that not have to be something that would have to be done before they could remeter?
Yeah, and that could be very expensive, very expensive. Because there's probably six or eight heating units for this building. Heating and air units outside. And then we have the gas. Yeah, it's a lot of units around this building.
You know, all we're really talking about is how you allocate costs.
Right.
The county's going to pay for this anyway.
Yeah.
So, I mean, for simplicity's sake, it seems to me the simplest thing you do is for the county to pick up the total cost, whatever it may be. They get, we get the bill and we don't know what it's going to cost when the gym is finally finished. So at least until that point, it seems to me the county should just pick up the total cost for the building then.
It's all about line items.
That's it.
It's coming out of the state pocket, and I certainly agree with the principle that that'd be the most efficient way to do it. But it's not the most economical. Because I'll tell you, if you've ever been to my son-in-law's house and they leave every light on every night and they take 30-minute showers, all the kids, I would not want to share his electric and water bill.
Fine, but it's just how to appropriate.
How they allocate.
Yes, and how those funds, I mean.
So what action do we need to take now?
Nothing really, we're pretty much waiting for the utilities.
We might as well wait until we.
Wait and see, that's what it is.
But I think we came together just for her to share with us.
This is sharing.
Yes.
Now, do we have any other business?
We don't have any other business unless you got something.
Motion to adjourn? Is that a motion?
You just made a motion.
I made a motion.
So you made it ahead of me after the board? You acted me to ask for which one?
I made a motion.
Sir?
All right, there is a motion. It has been motioned second that we adjourn. Is there any discussion here and then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. We have adjourned at 10:23.